I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Commissioner Schmidt is traveling back from NACO conference with our auditor right now, so he's not going to be here this morning. And then, do we have Commissioner Ehrens on the line? All right. So it'll just be the three of us today. So first, I'd like to make a couple of changes to the agenda. I'd like to remove items 12 and 13 from the agenda today. Those are still both things in the works. We have an offer on the property versus the eminent domain, so we need to talk about that in executive session. And then, as far as legacy aviation, we're taking that off because that's not settled.
Madam Chair, there's progress in trying to work through some issues there, so I'm just asking for a delay on that one.
So I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda without items 12 and 13. Thank you.
I'll also move.
I'll second.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Then you have all your routine business reports in your share drive. Everybody can take a look at those. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any public comment on consent agenda? If not, Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Moving on to regular business, the first item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a temporary on-sale malt beverage license to operate outside of a municipality for the Lennox Athletic Booster Club for a fundraiser on September 16th, 2023, located at 34.12 acres in the northeast quarter, including railroad property 29951, Lincoln County, South Dakota, also known as parcel number 099.51.291010. So this is a public hearing. Anybody presenting on this besides the applicant? All right, come on up. Just please start and state your first and last name and your address.
Jennifer Slack, 28357-4626 Avenue, Lennox, South Dakota, 57039.
All right. And then what are you seeking to do?
So we're having a benefit for Lennox Athletic Booster Club. So I'm here on behalf of them, and we're applying for the malt beverage license. This is our third year having this event. And it'll be from 8:00 to 11:00 is when we need the license for. We'll be there from 6:00 to 11:00.
All right. Any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? All right. If not, are there any opponents here to speak against the application? Any proponents in favor of the application that wish to speak? All right, if not, a closed testimony on that item and consider a motion.
I'll so move.
I will second that motion.
Those are motions to approve?
Yes.
All right, we've got a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All right, if not, will you call the roll, Kayla?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda, we have an annual report by Chris Graham. Is there anyone here to present on that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Chris Graham, CEO of Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare in Sioux Falls. And so I want to first start off with thank you for your continued support of our agency. This year in Lincoln County, we serve 228 clients. We are funded by the county by dollar per person per capita is how you give us money. And last year it was 44,000, and we provided over 275,000 worth of services. So it is a good partnership with the county and Southeastern Behavioral. Of that, you can see that we serve people that 28% of those that we provided service to made less than $10,000, 43% made below $15,000, and 50% of the people we served made below $20,000. So we do a lot of Medicaid and Medicare services to help support the kids, adults, and families. So that's kind of where we are this year. Are there any questions for us?
Anybody have any questions? I guess not today.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate our partnership, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any public comment on that agenda item? All right, if not, we'll move on to our first reading. Item three on our agenda, this is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, amending section 154.021. Definitions, section 154.057, A1 permitted special uses, section 154.077, RR permitted special uses, section 154.097, R1 permitted special uses, section 154.117, C permitted special uses, section 154.137, I1 permitted special uses, section 154.157, I2 permitted special uses, section 154.177, RC permitted special uses, and adding a new section, 154.254, transmission pipelines. The planning commission recommends approval with amendments. The vote was three to two. Our second reading on this, I believe, is August 1st. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
And that will be our public hearing on that agenda item. Next item on our agenda is item four. And we have Terry.
Good morning.
Good morning, Terry.
First item I have for you is a resolution to approve and authorize a chair to execute an agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation for a preservation grant for structure 42, 244, 255, in the amount of $1,209,600. This is a preservation grant on the, so this is the Hudson Bridge across the Big Sioux River. We applied for a preservation grant on that. We got some issues going on with the abutment walls on that, so we awarded that grant back in March. So we're ready to move forward in the process and sign the agreement.
All right, anybody have questions for Terry? If not, I'd consider a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
All right, next item I have, to approve and authorize a chair to execute grant applications for bridge improvement grant and/or local federal bridge program grants. If you looked at the list, I got 16 of them on there that we're going to be applying for. So this year, this is the federal state grant that the state facilitates. So if it's on a non-FAS road, you'll get, it's 100% paid. So all of these structures are on non-FAS road except for one, and that is on a federal aid route, and that one will be at 20%. But we're going to apply for all 16 of these. I have one of them on there that's removal only. Removal only is 42010-265, and this structure's been closed for probably about 15 years. And kind of contacted the township which it's in because it's on a township road, and they're okay with tearing it out before it falls in. So do you want me to read through the list of all these, the bridge numbers for that? No?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any questions on these?
Anybody have questions for Terry? All right. If not, do I give a motion?
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, will you go ahead and call the roll, Kayla?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Next item I have is to approve and authorize a chair to execute documents for the replacement of structure 42007040. This structure is located about two miles, two and a half miles west of T., three miles west of T., on County Road 106. This structure was awarded as part of the 2020 federal state bridge replacement program. So we have utility certification, letting authorization, right-of-way certificate, right-of-way easements with Daze Strattmeyer, and right-of-way easements with Strattmeyer Family Trust, all which need to be signed off on and sent back to the state.
All right, anybody have any questions for Terry? All right, if not, is there a motion?
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Next item I have is approve and authorize a chair to execute documents regarding the replacement of structure 42050287. This structure is located on County Road 111. It's about a half a mile north of Highway 46. County Road 111 is 469th. Again, this here is a, this here project is part of the 2020 federal state bridge replacement program that we are awarded a grant on. Again, on this one, we have utility certification, letting authorization, right-of-way certificate, right-of-way easements with James Hall Living Trust, and right-of-way easements with Peggy and David Thompson. Any questions on this?
Any questions? All right, if not, consider a motion.
Author, give a motion to approve.
Thank you. Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy, you're up. Item eight on our agenda, naming rights at the fairgrounds. Did you get your question answered from earlier?
I did, and can I request to give my quarterly report first as we wait for the...
Absolutely. We'll take item nine first.
Okay. Well, I will start with, in May, our 4-Hers were able to start our horse practices in the horse arena on Mondays and Thursdays until we had our horse show, June 29th. And dog practices were able to start on Tuesdays, the beginning of June, and will go through mid-August. We've had three different judging or skillathon events at our building this quarter. So we had a horse judging contest, June 13th, as part of a southeast South Dakota horse judging series, which is the first time we have participated in that, and had 22 4-Hers from four counties participate. We had our last consumer decision-making horticulture skillathon, June 15th, and had 10 from three counties. And then we hosted our annual livestock judging contest and skillathon, June 30th, where we had 44 4-Hers from 12 counties participate. We started offering the Ethics South Dakota Trapping Program in our county in April. We had eight youth sign up for that class, and we partnered with the outdoor campus to offer these classes. We've had two classes in April, and will continue those this fall. I offered a photography workshop at the outdoor campus with the Minnehaha County and the Sioux Falls Camera Club on June 1st. And the Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation held their second annual tractor pull, July 2nd, as part of the Lennox Old Fashioned Fourth of July Celebration. They also kicked off a cash cow fundraiser that will go through Achievement Days. They will be hanging sponsor signs this afternoon in the show ring building. Bricks should be going up as well. We're unsure of the start time for the two buildings, and Chad might be able to give you that information in the next section. We started chicks in the classroom, and in T., Harrisburg and Lennox, in March and April, and finished those up in May. So we hatched chicks in all three classrooms, and impacted 82 students that were in first, second, or third grade, depending on which school they were in. This project was funded through a Bear Grant that we received last fall. We'll be able to continue this project since we were able to buy the base materials to offer the program. And as from the 4-H program advisor perspective, I put on a poultry workshop with my poultry co-chair in Watertown in April, and El Point, June 28th. I accompanied the South Dakota 4-H delegation to the Citizenship Washington Focus Trip in Washington, DC, in the middle of June, and served on the search committee for a new state 4-H livestock coordinator. And our two interns, Carissa Sweeter and Kaylee Bosma, started the beginning of June and have been a great help in our office and have been putting on library programs in the county. And then you can see our facility usage for April through June has been quite a few things, various meetings with clubs, community groups, businesses. We started having barrel races there. If you've been by the fairgrounds in June, we had barrel races there in the middle of June on a Wednesday. We had one last Thursday and Saturday, and then they'll have one again August 9th from the same group. And I will say that Achievement Days are coming up next week, so we have July 30th through August 3rd is our Achievement Days. The 3rd is when we have our 4-H barbecue and the premium sale at 5:00 that night. And the shirt I'm wearing today is our new t-shirt design that was done by one of our senior 4-H members. So that's all that I have for you this morning on that topic.
Nobody has any questions? Okay.
Okay.
What's the next item? You've got the naming rights.
Yes, I have Chad here.
Okay.
So we're waiting on our treasurer to come, too.
Yeah, so she actually has...
Do you want us to skip over you for a minute until she gets here?
She should be here pretty soon, so maybe...
I could talk for, I can pretty much cover everything we need to know, I think.
Okay, go for it.
Like Wendy said, there's been a lot of events that have happened this summer out there, and an amazing amount of positive feedback from all the community that's been there for these events. As far as where we stand with the two new buildings that are going up, I just talked to Cleary yesterday, and every project they have all across the country is two weeks behind because the lady that dispatches the, all the buildings, had some medical issues. And she thought she was going to be back to work, and she wasn't, so everything just got delayed. So he's looking at two weeks from now that they'll deliver the buildings, and then they're going to put them both up while they're there. As far as the naming rights, we had talked before with the commissioners that about 60% is what you were looking for, for us to be able to put somebody else's name on the building. And for both of these buildings, we've come up with, the two that are on the east side facing the road, we've found people that want their names on them. I don't know if I can say who they are yet, can I? Oh, okay. So Jerry's Auto would be the north one, and the south one is Security State Bank out of Lennox and Chancellor. They've both committed the 60%. Jerry's is, he's going to pay it in...
Three years?
Yep, three installments. But like Commissioner Schmidt said the last time, money's money. And in this project, it's a pretty big deal for us to be able, just to move ahead on something, be able to put another building up. And yeah, I guess without the actual numbers that Christie has, I'm, that's where we're at, I guess, looking at if the commission is okay with the, with us letting them put their names on them.
Who's going to drop the contract for that? And the terms of it?
As a, as a...
I'm just wondering if our office is doing that, or if you guys are doing that?
As a foundation, there was some basic rules that we had set up that we thought would pretty much cover everything. The, the name stays as long as the business stays. So like, for example, Security State Bank, if they get sold to US Bank, the building, the naming rights on the building don't go with. We get, we get to sell that again.
How does, how's the financing work if they're not going to pay it all upfront?
It's a, it's a set amount.
Okay.
That 60% just divided over like three installments. And the date between the foundation and the investor will just decide a date. If it's the 1st of June they want to pay it, it'll all just be in writing that that's the day, and...
And that'll be passing through the foundation, then? The payments will?
Yes.
How about rules on the size of the sign, or how, what those will look like? Any of that been addressed?
They'll probably have to get permitting, do we have to, we have to get building permits, right, that will address the signage?
The sign will go right on the building. I guess we haven't talked about whether we needed a building permit. We can sure check into that. But we voted that the signs will be five by 10. We met, or we talked with the builder, and it'll go up above the door.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Give you a second, catch your breath.
As far as what the signs will look like, for example, everybody knows what Jerry's sign looks like.
Will they be illuminated or just a...
Illuminated, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes, that is the plan, is we do plan on getting lighting.
Not, not as far as like neon signs or anything like that, but like a security light that lights up at night.
Yes, the light will come down.
We'll just have a security light that catches it?
Yep.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
You've been working on this for a while.
Yes.
Anybody, you have any questions, Commissioner? All right, so action, you just want our approval to go ahead with...
...Bank and Jerry's Auto Sales and Autobots.
Yeah, and it's back to the question of the contract. They'll have to present something to our staff to actually review for, for it to be signed, I'm assuming. Bill, Steve, any comment on that, procedures on having to have it run through our council at all for review, or is it the contract?
There should be something in writing, or something should be...
Yep.
How they get to accomplish, we can always discuss that.
Okay. Very good.
So yeah, so let's, I think generally you have our consensus that yes, you can move forward with it, but I think we do need to see what that final agreement looks like.
As far as like how long the name stays up there and that type of thing?
Well, just the contract itself, since the buildings are going on the county land, and we just needed to see what that looks like, since the buildings obviously become fixtures.
I think it's the legal jargon that, no, I don't. This one and a few other people can read it.
It is the legal jargon.
It's the legal jargon that 90% of us at least don't understand it, just to get the fine print. Like you said, about if the, the structure or the business is sold, making sure that's reviewed and what that process is and all that, so. But as far as, if you need a motion, I would grant a motion to approve these two to move forward, and I will offer that motion to move forward with these two for naming rights.
Fair enough. That sounds good. Commissioner Gibbon?
I'll second it.
All right, I've got a motion and a second.
I do have, I have a question. Were, did everybody find out about this, whether more businesses that were interested in, in putting a name tag or, other than these two?
Yes, we still have two buildings, so, that we need sponsorship for. But yes, we have talked to multiple businesses.
Okay.
And, and we're still talking to at least one. So, but if any, I mean, we're open to whoever would like to, well, not whoever, but, you know, yes.
It can be a slippery slope. Some people say, well, I never found out about it, or we'd be interested, and I just wanted to make sure that all businesses were aware that this was an opportunity.
Yes, and, and maybe not like within the last six months, but when we first started this, we did an extensive mail campaign, and on our flyer, it mentioned, you know, naming rights and doing a bigger donation and things like that.
Okay.
And these were two that not only approached, or that we, technically, we've been talking with these two businesses for over three years and trying to work things out, and so...
Is the main structure, the current building, is that, did anybody step up?
Not yet.
So that would remain too, or is that not on the table for a business?
Oh, yes. If someone wants to, to sponsor that, that would be something, too, because that would help us then have the funds to put up the other buildings.
Very good.
Would your goal be to complete this this year yet, or what are your thoughts? Hopeful thinking?
That's always our goal.
Yeah, that's, we are looking at the possibility of a third barn yet this year. And that would leave one left before Achievement Days next year. So our goal is to have all four of them up before Achievement Days next year.
Next year?
Yep.
Otherwise, you're going to have a busy 10 days if it's this year.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Well, my goal for this year was to have two up, and I guess we have two purchased, so I guess that's close.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Kayla, will you go ahead and call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Morning, Tracy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm in front of you today to ask for approval for the additional hire of a dispatcher in the sheriff's office. In the briefing form, you can see some of the facts and vettings as to why we wanted to over-hire for this position. We recently did, had an, an application pool open, and we found two really marvelous candidates and would like to move forward with both of them. There are reasonings there with the sheriffs and I, where that it takes a lot of time and effort to try to find a dispatch. Additionally, whenever we are having a gap, our overtime goes over by 62%. And so this time, we did have multiple recruits that were excellent and good, in good form, and we'd love to bring both of them on, and wanted to bring that approval to you, Ice.
All right, anybody have questions for Tracy?
What was the amount per hour?
Oh, so, so they're like, what the salary is?
Yes.
Is that what you're, I believe it is $25 an hour, but I would need to double-check. I apologize. I don't have that in front of me.
For each one?
Yes.
This is just a one?
Pardon?
The one is just a fill-in, fill-in?
I understand that.
And then, okay, just so, it's not two new, it's one new?
Exactly, yes. It's one new. We just had a vacancy, and so we're asking for one additional hire.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll so move. I'll second it.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have, we need board action to declare a surplus, appoint an appraisal committee for and authorize for online auction for the following items from the sheriff's office, 5720-2017 Dodge Charger, I'm assuming that should say Charger, then 2C, 3C, DXKT, 7JJ596317, with 200,102 miles on it. So first, I need to know who's going to be on the appraisal committee.
I hear Commissioner Ehrens and Commissioner Schmidt have volunteered.
I hear that they have volunteered. I need one more person.
Steve Swenson and Chad Brown have offered to be on the committee as well, so only one of, one of those people needs to be included.
All right, well, let's do, let's take Schmidt and the two from the sheriff's office.
I know Commissioner Ehrens will be disappointed, but I think he'll, he'll be all right.
All right. So then I need a motion to declare surplus, appoint those folks as the appraisal committee, and then authorize the online auction.
I would offer that motion.
Thank you. Got a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Next item, board action to vacate 12th Street in Canton. Mr. Golden, are you handling that?
The city of Canton is vacating a road in town. It's on 12th Street. It abuts a piece of property the county went ahead and took by tax deed. And so as an owner of the property, they're asking for us to consent for that vacation of the road. It is next to a house. It's an open field. It is not a current road at this point in time. So that is what the proposal is.
Anybody have questions?
And the Canton municipality, what was their take on this, or what was their input?
They're the ones who approached our office and asked if the commission would agree as a landowner to the tax deed property, because the end of the road abuts up, up to that property, whether or not the commission would object to the road being vacated.
I did not look at the file. Can you tell me it doesn't affect the access to the tax deed property?
It would affect the access to it, um, but it's property that at some point in time, there's a really good chance that the auditor's gonna come to you and ask for you to donate that land to the city of Canton because of its location. We've done that in the past on these parcels.
That was gonna be my next question, if it's something that we're going to be transferring to the city.
Probably gonna be a Canton problem before, before long.
Is there any way we could do the two motions? Can we, or I don't know if the treasurer.
Probably should actually ask him if they'd like the piece of property before you give it to him.
Well, I, I would like to know that before I vacate a pe, a road to it then, for access purposes as well.
See you on him, join.
Yeah.
Do you want to table this until next meeting and?
See if we can't put them together.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I get a motion to table.
I would offer that motion.
Do I have a second? Are you my second?
I'll second it.
Thanks. Any public comment on this agenda item? Alright. Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes. Next item.
Good morning, Commissioners. My first item is to, uh, accept, uh, um, proposals from the three different contractors that gave me proposals for the remaining portion of the 4H water utility project. Um, Tipton Digging came in at low bid at $30,600. Precision Dirt Works came in at $36,235. And Short Escavating came in at $39,546.92.
And can you tell us specifically about what this water utility project entails?
I've actually got a layout of that. I can, I probably could pull it up on this too. Where am I at here? Not familiar if I can turn it on this, but I can try. I guess I can. Thank you. So basically.
Can you blow it up?
You know, that's a, okay. So what we're focusing on is the, the items in blue. And basically, uh, South Lincoln County rural water pushed the water service underneath of the highway. And that would start clear off to the right side there. Um, that's the, the, the box. I don't know if I can, yeah, if I could circle that right there. And so then this project will end up feeding, uh, straight to the west. And then it'll branch from there. We'll have two branches that come down and, and give water sources for the, the horse arena for their events. And then the branches that go north will feed a, 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 um, service to each of their future buildings. So this, these are the two buildings that they just addressed here. This will be the, the building that's, uh, will have the Jerry's name on it. And this will be the structure that has the, um, bank's name on it. And then in between, uh, these structures are the wash rack for providing, you know, washing the animals to bring them into the existing show ring. So that's, there's a bit, there's a service to that, each of the two wash racks. That will allow us to hook up and drain back at the end of the season, each of those wash racks. Future wash racks. So currently, right now, this, this is the existing structure, the, the Clary building that they built two years ago. And like I said again, these are the two structures that will be built within the next couple of weeks. Sizing is a little off, uh, because they, they've downgraded the sizing a little bit to make it work for their budget.
And are those exterior water points, or are they getting plumbed into the building?
Um, the, the building ones will be just inside of the buildings. Um, and it'll be, it'll still be a, um, livestock hydrant, much like they had at their old 4H grounds.
So are these all livestock hydrants, or?
Uh, yeah, basically, they're pretty much all, except for the two in the wash racks are kind of a unique thing because of the water flow. They needed to fu, to push water to the wash racks, they needed to have a two-inch feed. And so it's a specialized drain back with a curb stop that will allow us to basically plumb the wash racks from there.
It's not designed for any public use, or public consumption, it's just for livestock purposes.
Right, it's non-podable.
Yep.
Okay.
The potable phase will eventually take place when this is the future restroom slash maybe a shower house. And then at that point, we'll have to have a potable source there.
John Boring, under the road, is that for connection then for possible rural water or?
That's already done.
That's already done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, anybody have any other questions for John? Alright, if not, is there a motion?
I'll also move.
I will second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item?
Betty Otten, 4678, 7273rd Street and T. Um, I, I want to comment on both, um, 15 and 16 because, um, for $30,000, or $30,600. And then on the next one, um, for, um, all of these exhibits that are going out there. Why is the foundation not paying for these? And why are taxpayers throughout Lincoln County paying for this when this is specifically for the 4H buildings? Thank you.
Thank you, response either Commissioner?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Comments? Alright, you guys are ready to vote. Go ahead then, uh, if there's no further discussion, Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
So my next item?
Oh, wait, you.
Yeah, I haven't voted yet.
She hasn't voted yet, sorry, John.
I just have some questions that need to be answered, probably in executive session, so I'm gonna vote no right now.
Alright.
And the next item?
So the next item is, uh, the engineering. As part of what was voted on earlier, we had an agreement with DGR Engineering to do, um, uh, uh, let's see here. To create, um, basically, we created a master plan. And this started out because we needed DGR to help us figure out this water system to make sure it was built and sized correctly to handle the load that we would have during Achievement Days. And of course, there, you know, a lot of this, I know we, it keeps coming back that a lot of this is used for Achievement Days. But this will be used, utilized throughout the summer for multiple events, especially the horse ring, the horse arena area. But, um, basically, when we approached them, we had a couple dilemmas. Because when, on IMAG Engineering did the basic drainage flow of the area, they, the, the area was full of low spots and all that. We stripped it off and we, and we leveled it with, gave it a gentle flow of, uh, to remove, uh, storm water from the site. And basically drain it from the northwest, or northeast to the southwest. So basically, if you look at this layout again, um, we have our show ring and the future, uh, two buildings. And basically, the water was designed to flow back here where there's a drainage and a little pond back down in here. If they could see it, right there's the pond. And that was effective until we started building the buildings in here and we started backing the water up a little bit. Plus, the other dilemma we came across was, even though the water is meant to flow across here, it wasn't flowing quickly enough and it seemed to stay wet in the horse arena. So, because when we approached them about the water project, and they were an engineering company, we talked to them about, you know, these headaches and, and these issues and, uh. So DGR came back and they sent the proposal for the, the engineering de, design work. And, and basically developed a master plan for the site. So this, what you're seeing is, is the, the basic master plan. So this is, and, and to be honest, this turned out to be a lot more elaborate than I was anticipating. Uh, again, my, my main focus up, upfront was is to get the water sizing right, to, to avoid those kind of headaches of not having the right amount of water, bring me that. So, what they would like, what they were proposing is, is these areas in green would be potentially, the dirt would be removed. And, uh, those would be their own separate drainage areas, which would allow the water to focus and then be pumped or supplied through storm sewer services back out towards the ditch area. Very elaborate and quite honestly, quite expensive. Just wanna go to this. So now we're back to this thing here. So the other part of this, the third major thing that DGR did for us was, because we will have the future restroom, was to come up with a plan for the septic systems. And this, quite honestly, uh, became a, a lot of discussion, a lot more than I anticipated originally. Just, I basically needed to have a plan where this would land in the end when the bathroom did get built. And I felt like that was the right timing to do it all together. So they developed a pretty elaborate, to handle the highest peak load of people, they, they, they planned a, uh, where's that here? You know, a three-tank system. Now, we could start off with, one of the things that we had con, talk early on was, maybe we would just containerize it in one or two tanks, have the tanks pumped every night. And, and that's probably doable for a while, but at some point, we're gonna have to have it go into a septic system. And there's some legalities to this that I can't really honestly explain, and we'll have to have engineers come in and explain that. But all said and done, they came up with this plan and we utilized the monies that we were there. In the process, in meeting with them, there was, um, I was thinking, there was one more sheet here. Alright. So in the process of meeting with them, we also had a conversation with the 4H people that, uh, they would like to consider shooting sports to have a safety shooting berm. When we purchased this piece of property, the Goldman people were already utilizing it as kind of a shooting range. And, uh, and it worked well for us, for the 4H people to go out and shoot, because they had the natural earth and berm that used to be the railroad tracks. But as we were discussing it, is if they migrated into utilizing it for all the time for 22s and, uh, I think that's the highest caliber they shoot. It would be smartest and safest if they actually had shooting berms. So in, in that conversation with the engineers and also with the 4H group, uh, leadership group, they, uh, uh, they said that some of that shooting range could be done through grant process, much like a lot of what they're doing. But, so while we were meeting with engineers, I asked engineers if they could consider helping us design, because they needed to have some sort of a design to present to, uh, uh, for the grant process. So needless to say, I, what I didn't understand, and I guess I should have, is, is that was additional over what we originally agreed to. So all said and done, and I sent, and I've attached a copy of what Scott Lavoy had sent me, but we, we are, over the, the existing contract with them, we, we needed a, we now owe them $4,733.17. And some of that's for that additional berm work, which I authorized, and some of that's for just overages for like discussion of the future septic system and stuff that we weren't anticipating the headaches with.
Anybody have questions? If not, is there a motion?
I think we've discussed this, um, several times, um, understand the procedures. Unfortunately, we have a bill that needs to get paid. I am going to authorize that we make that payment for those, uh, above the original contract. And that we utilize those for planning purposes, uh, moving forward in the future, protecting the area that would be a septic, potential septic area, as well as applying for granting for the berm, or, uh, the shooting range.
So your motion includes an additional engineering?
This additional engineering that has already actually taken place, the payment for those services.
Commissioner Gibbon, any comment, discussion, questions?
Can you clarify your motion a little clearer for me?
So there's a request to make payment for services provided that exceeded the original contract.
Okay.
Uh, which those services were the engineering for the septic system for the, uh, future bathhouse, uh, which has not been approved yet. But, um, we will need to protect that area where the bathhouse will be for, um, septic, uh, potential septic system. As well as they needed, uh, engineering for application for granting for building a shooting, uh, area on the property, so.
So you are not asking for any additional funding other than what they've already invoiced, is that correct?
Correct, at this point, uh, moving forward, it will be up to them to present if they need to have additional funding for anything.
Thank you. Alright, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item?
Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. Just listing what's going on here today, it seems to me like we're throwing an awful lot of money at this thing out of the taxpayers' dollars. For some reason, the original engineering didn't take into account sloping this land properly, and all of a sudden, we've gotta pump a bunch of water. And at what point are we gonna call it quits here? You know, we spent 36, or approximately $36,000 here today. Out of, you know, that's, that's one person's wages for a year in Lincoln County. I think we ought to think about this a little bit. It's getting to be out of hand. That's all I got, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, any other public comment on this agenda item?
Mark Nordsee, 7900 South Pinewood. I want to commend John for at least putting a plan in place. I've not seen a plan prior to this, um, and so thank you for doing that. Uh, my concern with this has been already addressed by the previous two speakers, is we seem to be spending an awful lot of money on 4H with no grand plan for where we're going, what the end game is, um, what it's finally gonna cost. And most importantly is, what is the foundation's role in paying for some of this? It seems like they keep coming back to Lincoln County for an open checkbook to fund whatever they choose to fund. And as a nonprofit organization, they should be doing grant requests, they should be raising money, they should be doing more than they are and not keep coming back to the taxpayers for money. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Alright, if not, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, Kayla, will you call the roll, please?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Alright, uh, next on our agenda is opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in our audience today who would like to come up and make comment?
Well, I know this was on the consent agenda, but I wanted to say a public thank you to, um, William Golden for his service to Lincoln County, for his service on, um, getting the courthouse all put together. Um, I just want to thank him publicly for what he's done for Lincoln County.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, yes, he'll be greatly missed. Anybody else wanna come up?
Good morning, Jessica Palamon, Lincoln County. Um, just wanted to say, we're still waiting for a public hearing. Waiting for a date to be announced.
Yeah.
And we are here to help.
Gladly chat with you about it afterwards.
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to see the contract for ESNS pushed until you all get to hear all of the reasons why you should not pay for that with our tax dollars, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to make public comment today? Anybody else like to make public comment today?
Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I'd like to address one of the, under your public comment policy, under the last section, Lincoln County Board, County Commissioners' policy regarding regular business items. Number four, it says, must submit six copies of the materials at least 24 hours in advance. Well, that gives me a half an hour on Monday morning to give you six copies. Am I reading this wrong? I mean, I've been told we can email it, but are you guys, is the county going to print out whatever I email you, six copies?
You can provide it on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and a Friday. You're not limited at all when.
The agenda is let, is announced on Friday, correct? And I've got to have that by Monday morning at 8:30 to make, my comments made on Tuesday morning at 8:30.
So the agenda's posted online when?
Friday.
Bill? So you'd have to get it to us before then, yes?
Yeah. Gives me half an hour Monday morning.
I'm, I'm taking your point.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to see that changed.
Thank you.
Okay. And another thing I guess I'd like to address is, and I don't know if, you might, might correct me if this was on the agenda or not, but the eminent domain issue on the pipeline, which I don't think was on the agenda. I'd just like to read you a couple paragraphs from an article put out by NPR.
All right. Keep it brief. We are having a public hearing on this next week.
Yes, this won't take long. This is from the rupture that happened in Sotarsia, Mississippi. The rupture occurred at 7:06 PM and spewed CO2 for four hours. The 911 center in Yazoo County, Mississippi was flooded with emergency calls. The climate investigation center obtained records of the 911 calls and shared them with NPR. And one 911 caller mother pleaded for help because her daughter couldn't breathe, her hacking audible in the background. Another 911 caller stranded on the highway described what was happening to her friend. She's laying on the ground and she's shaking. She's kind of drooling out of her mouth. I don't know if she's having a seizure or not. Can you send somebody quick? Humans always breathe some carbon dioxide. Too much causes thirst for oxygen, disorientation, heart malfunction. Extreme exposures to carbon dioxide can lead to death by asphyxiation. The use of carbon dioxide to kill pigs and avatars is now under scrutiny over whether it complies with federal laws on a humane slaughter. Carbon dioxide, open air can disperse, but third-party air monitoring that night in Sotarsia showed that potent clouds of CO2 can sometime, sometimes hang in the air for hours. It quickly became clear that the cloud of carbon dioxide was hampering the emergency response. Combustion engines need oxygen to work, and the carbon dioxide displaced the oxygen in the air. Many cars stopped running. Here's another caller. "I don't know what's going on," the caller said to the highway, on the highway. "My car stopped. It won't move." And we just got out of the car and started walking.
Mr. Montgomery.
Fire coordinator from the Warren County.
Mr. Montgomery, your time has elapsed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public want to come up and make comment?
You have not, you didn't, chose not to act on the eminent domain issue about the west of town here with this. I'd just like to comment or make you aware of a concern, and maybe this isn't appropriate since you took that off the agenda. But my name, first of all, I'm Gary Schultz. I live in Canton, 1015 East Second. I'm a longtime member of Redeemer Free Lutheran Church. We have a concern that has, I don't think, been voiced to everybody. And I think some of you know this. We have a drainage system from our sump pumps that drain onto the creek of the property that is considered for eminent domain. If the road goes in where we think it will, it would destroy our drainage system. We have a drainage system that goes to the creek on that property. We have an arrangement that we have made with the property owner many, many years ago. We've been doing this for many years. It's a concern that if that road is put in, that it would destroy our drainage system, which we have spent a great deal of money and a great deal of time. So I just think this is kind of a for your information.
No, I appreciate it very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up for a public comment?
Good morning. Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I have a couple of questions. I brought the public comment. And under policies for regular business agenda, the public may comment on any item under regular business, which we, we weren't able to comment on three. And then with three, we have actually three items on the agenda requiring eminent domain. And to me, everything happens in executive session. That takes away our right to have an opinion, to express an opinion as a citizen. The eminent domain issue is not a single issue. If we take two properties in Lincoln County with eminent domain, we have to realize every citizen in this county is at risk. And it's being dealt with in executive session. I believe, we didn't even, haven't even voted as a people in Lincoln County for that justice system. And yet, we're going to take eminent, eminent domain to get a driveway. This is a slippery slope. And I, as a citizen of Lincoln County, am very afraid of this action this board has taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up?
Mike Mathis, Sioux Falls. I ran for Commissioner last time and I talked to, I went door to door, over 500 doors, probably 700, talked to a lot of them about the jail situation. And most, I'd say 85 to 90% were against it, probably maybe 80 to be on a low end. And here you guys go ahead and pass it without a vote and just steamroll it through to the people. And then you listen to what Linda has to say about eminent domain. You need to listen to your people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up? All right. If not, we'll move on to Commissioner reports. Commissioner Poppins, any report you'd like to make?
Have good things to say about the two people that have been added. Sorry to hear that Bill is leaving. I was hoping that maybe he changes mine. But a lot of good things. Airshow in Sioux Falls, our airport will be very busy with individuals bringing their aircraft down. So a lot of activity. People stay, stay cool the next few days because it's going to get hot. That's it.
All right. Commissioner Gibbon, any report you'd like to make?
I have nothing.
All right. Just real quick, I did have a meeting on the owners' meeting for the 85th interchange that's going to go in. It looks like, just real generally, they're going to be letting that project late 2024 into early 2025. And they will be working on building out the intersection. Actually, they just opened bids on 85th and Tall Grass and building out that intersection. And then Sundowner is to follow on, along 85th, but that one I don't believe has bid, been bid yet. So, but they're looking at construction 24, 25. Anyway, just an update on that. That's all I have for Commissioner Report. Any need for executive session today, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. What sections? Do we need all of them or?
Yes, we do.
Great. I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session under SDCL 125, two sub one, sub three, and sub four.
I so move.
All right. I've got a motion. I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any public input? All right. If not, Kayla, call the roll.
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes. Executive session?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes. Before we adjourn, I just want to note, our budget work session is not going to take place tonight because of a posting issue. I'm not exactly sure what it was. Didn't get posted somewhere?
Didn't get posted in the courthouse.
Okay. So it didn't get posted on the courthouse. So we are canceling that budget work session. And then we're scheduled to continue with budget talks on, I believe, August 1st. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Kayla, will you call the roll?
Poppins.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great week.